Thumbs up.
Thumbs up.
Oh, hi. Welcome back. Welcome back.
Welcome back.
Um, do I have to like reintroduce the meeting?
You just say we're.
We're back from non-public. And, and so we're resuming our public meeting and um so we, we were discussing the budget and some topics that we felt were really important. Um, we had some great discussion and um we really value the input of our public and our teachers and we appreciate um that they came tonight um to speak. On their behalf and um as a board, we would like to continue to support the library media specialist position staying in the budget. And we would like to ask the school district to find fifty-five thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars elsewhere. We have identified a few areas tonight, um but such as bookmobile, NEAS, things like that, but we would like to um continue to keep that position this year. Um, in the budget, um part of the discussion revolved around um, we don't feel like there's a um solid plan right now on how to fill the void of the um, the li- library media specialist. Uh, am I saying, is it assistant?
Assistant. Library media aide.
Aide, library media aide, sorry. Um, so that's part of our consideration was that um we have a full-time person working and we don't have a really very clear plan on how it would look next year, where we would fill the holes. So uh without, without that, we feel that it's um will negatively impact our students to not have that library media assistant available for next year. However, we are dismissing the fact that perhaps, I think we talked about um maybe finding other ways. I think we would need a more clear picture on how we would, how we would serve, continue to serve our students in other ways if we did not have a library media specialist aide.
Yeah, certainly some of the conversation revolved around um still the same aspect without having a clear plan on what, what's gonna happen. Even regardless of whether we had continued to support this or not, the, the individual in the role now is retiring. So there's potentially still gonna be a gap there. So how would we support the media specialist if we don't happen to even hire an assistant? So continuing to work on a plan would also be beneficial, but to.
If we're unable to, if we are unable to find somebody.
Right, there's still should be some, some plan on how, how they're gonna be supported regardless. So continue on with some of that work we all feel is still uh relevant and necessary. But um given what was presented tonight, uh finding, finding the money in, in other areas to, to offset um the proposed, the originally proposed re um ending of that position, it seems to be a, a better solution.
So I guess I would just ask for clarification and I, I get your direction and that's good. Um, if they were to come, the principals or whomever, however this is decided, comes back and they do two part-time ones. And so then the health insurance piece comes out and they're filling that with two part-time people. Is that an okay movement or is that something you would not want to have?
Ninety-three days at each building, which is what the current workload is now.
Just so when the conversations are occurring, like I know how to direct that, like it, would the board be opposed to part-time versus one full-time shared? Cause it's gonna come up.
I think it's going to be easier to hire a full-time person, I'll be honest with you. Um, there's not a lot of people out there looking for a two-day-a-week job. Um.
But.
If we, if we.
We could advertise it as both though, right? You could advertise for two part-time or one full-time and see what gets filled. That's, that's at least a possibility.
Yeah, I mean.
But for budgeting purposes.
I'm open to more of that discussion, certainly. Um.
I just had a question, I, I guess, am I hearing the directive as to find a way to fill the current need or find a way to keep the position as it is? So I, I think the answer to that is it would, it would probably be preferable to keep it as it is. If the option for two-part-time makes sense and that's something worth revisiting and having the discussion about. But I think ultimately the resolution of that portion of it is separated from the, the budgetary concern.
And, and we, we did think about the fact that perhaps bringing so, a new person in might not be at the same cost that the person retiring, so there, there's a um, there's a per potential difference in what that actual position costs us as a district. Is it, is it fifty-five thousand? Maybe not. Um, for someone who.
Could see more, it could be they take a family plan, it could be they take the dental, that cost could go up.
Right.
Depending who comes in that division, um play, depending whether placed on the salary scale, it could be a shift, it could go up, it could go down, so that number. But just in general, you want that full position to go stay where it currently is.
I, I think yes, because we just don't have a good idea of how we're going to navigate next year. So we did discuss not voting on the budget tonight. However, um if you can take a look before the tenth, if you are able, because we have the budget committee meeting and if there's any.
So really, when we go back to the budget committee on the tenth, the purpose of that one, right, is to bring forward our warrants as is as presented. Um, but that doesn't mean that there can't be movement within the budget still. Um, so if you give me enough direction tonight, we can definitely do another meeting. Um.
We're scheduled to meet on the eighteenth.
We're, right, but that one would be after next Wednesday with the budget committee for the warrant review.
But they're not, they're not voting, they're not voting on our budget next Wednesday.
So I, I think, I think what we'd be asking you to present next week to the budget committee would be the change uh less the, less the position right now. So I guess that brings us in around like two ninety-seven-ish.
Yeah.
Um, go back with that and also with the, the knowledge that we, uh, the board has requested determine to try and find an additional fifty-five thousand four seventy-five of additional cuts.
But if we find some, say we decide the bookmobile, let's just say we decide that, we decide accreditation, maybe there's some stuff from there. Do those, make those cuts, keep that one in. Um, what was the direction with the sublines?
Yeah, uh, oh yeah, this is.
I think we say we wanna go.
We wanna fund them.
With about the two forty decrease over the budget, right, that we talked about, which would include the sublines, keeping this position in there. So it'll be about a two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar decrease from what was originally submitted with us going back and looking for additional to try to achieve the ask of the two-eighty-eight.
Okay, so keep the position, add the fifty-six-thousand dollars to the sublines.
Correct.
Okay, and then find other areas to bring back the fifty-five thousand.
Correct.
Got it.
So we're only finding fifty-five.
Easy.
Yes.
Got it.
Yeah.
It sounded like a hundred and one for a second.
No, it's, it's, yeah, that's just where the, it's finding the difference between what had been proposed originally from the sublines and getting to the actuals for the sub.
So you're authorizing the increase of the fifty-six thousand, but then wanting us to find fifty-six thousand to offset the position that was going to be coming out.
Right.
Got it.
Another line, I'm just, I'm just going back to my notes from last week, but and I believe I brought this up. Um, I had added up a whole bunch of lines in the media center for the middle high school and it, it was twenty-two. Most, again, several lines of, you know, replace new supplies was twenty-two thousand four hundred. Perhaps that's an area that could be looked at to see if there's, again, if they, there weren't, there weren't specific um descriptions. It would say like, um, I'd have to look in my notes, I could uh probably, I could probably find it cause I highlighted them. Um.
You had, um, it was in uh fifty-seven thirty-seven.
That was the furniture, fifty-seven thirty-seven.
Yep.
Media centers, so there's media center special events, middle media center special events, high, media sen- center repair equipment, um. Media center supplies, high, that's twenty-three ninety-nine, media center books, thirty-seven sixty-nine. Media center books, middle thirteen ninety-nine, media center books, high twenty-eight twenty-five. Media center reference, middle seven forty-eight, media center reference, high seven forty-eight, media center periodical, seven seventeen. I'm not saying we don't need these things, I'm just asking us to look at, to look at what we spend in, cause we're I'm just asking, cause twenty-two thousand four hundred dollars, is, is, is there any money in there that could be repurposed?
Be salvage.
Yep.
You know, it's specific to the, just because it happens to be media center position or that was just a place you looked?
I, not be, no, be, that, I looked at that before because it's just a lot. Where's, so the elementary school, and I get a different population of kids, but the elementary school, tho- their lines were like seventy-five hundred and the middle high school was like twenty-two thousand. So I was, I was asking what's, where's the difference and, and I'm, now I'm still kind of asking and I mean, you cannot, you cannot look there too, that's fine, I, I just.
I, I was only, I was only asking because the position we talked about was.
It was library media center, again, but that, that.
That was coincidence.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, it's a big number, so.
Thank you.
But yeah, um. So yeah, does that, do you have what you need from us?
Yep, um, I think I have a few thoughts or conversations tonight of some areas we can look at to trim um some more and then I guess my only last thought is once we do this Wednesday, like how do we work that through, I just. We don't have another meeting before Wednesday, I think that's why I'm like stumped, like so, so I just, am I just gonna bring it forward?
I think I would bring it forward, that we didn't, at this point, we haven't quite hit the two-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand. Uh, but the direction from the board was to find another fifty-five thousand five hundred to, to come out, which would put us back up to around two ninety-seven, I think. So it was, we'd still end up getting a little bit beyond what they had asked for, so that we're still, that, that is still our direction is to, to find some more to, to meet or exceed the request. But we're at the, what was it, two forty-something?
Two forty.
It was, uh, two forty right now.
But they wouldn't really be approving the warrant, cause they wouldn't really have the set amount for the warrant. So I guess do push that warrant meeting, oh.
If there, uh, if there isn't going to be anything else of, of substance uh for that meeting, uh, I guess potentially.
Cause it's Wednesday, December tenth, this warrant article.
Cause we have, yeah, we have discussed about the, the capital reserve fund, we don't have any contracts this year. So the only two things that are gonna be on our, our ballot are the, the budget and the, and the capital reserve fund, right?
Right, so we've done it before and that's where I'm just kinda thinking, do we want to potentially, we have the final review at the town, it says town hall, but I'm thinking that's here on December eighteenth, final review.
Yeah, yeah, we're definitely, that, there's, we have a school board meeting on.
So I think I would just go to the warrant article review on s- next Wednesday at six and just tell them that we're still reviewing some areas that we don't have a warrant article and just tell them that at that point and then we'll come back at the eighteenth for the final review and then um at the Wednesday meeting, I will ask the budget committee what another meeting might look like, uh, maybe at the beginning of January to do a warrant article review at that point. Okay.
I feel like we.
We've done that before.
I, yeah, I feel like we got into a similar situation in, in my ti- in my three times this has happened before.
We definitely.
I mean, I don't wanna, we need to be making the decisions, the right decisions at the right time, but I don't want the time to force our hand.
No, I know we've said in many um budget committee meetings at the beginning of January, um, so.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and perhaps in your bill, uh, might, might just be best off to email Mike and just let him know and I'll give him the, the opportunity to make the decision. Does he want you guys to still show up and, and present what information you have that night or let you guys be free? And maybe they, I'm presuming they have the town coming on the same night for something else.
Yeah.
Um, so maybe that just gives them some more time with the town.
They're reviewing the towns and, but I can talk to Jake and see if they're ready for their warrants, I don't know if they're ready for their warrants either, so that might be a total push for both of us. So that will be my thing, uh, we'll come back on the eighteenth for a final review of what we look like and I will be asking for a warrant article review sometime at the beginning of January, um, for timelines.
As you're making places to kind of go back and look, I have just two things to bring up as well, possibly to um, as you're considering, where, where could some cuts be made? I still question the necessity of a staff development coordinator, given that, I, I mean, I know that there it, it sounded like from the explanation at the last meeting that they're really, it's a stipend to a teacher, I believe.
There are three.
There's three of them.
There's three of them, right? One for each level and it's, it's in, it's around preparing that recertification process.
Like ten thousand dollars to me, the three.
I just, I don't, I mean, I, again, I, I just wonder, is, is it, is it necessary for a district this size to have three? I don't know, I.
Was that a question or?
I, I, it's just a place to look, I don't, I don't know, I'm not.
I know there's contingencies around what's stipended versus our budget, I don't know how much. However, I think you identified some practices we've been trying to address as we've gone from two schools to one. And I think perhaps when there were three separate schools, it might have made some sense. If you ask me at this moment, I think there's some validity to exploring what you're asking. And I don't think it's the fir- I know it's not the first time it's come up.
Well, and I, I think we've talked about a lot of, some of those responsibilities are being um taken on by our curriculum coordinators.
And it's more appropriate.
So.
Okay, and we will definitely um do that, I know there would be probably some discussion with the stipend committee, I would think. I mean, they're not regulated by the CB, but the, the CBA, but the language behind the stipend committee is. So um I can meet with Bill a little bit just to talk about how that would look if we were to look at those areas, um, just I don't. Might be a little gray area, right, to be able to do, but something we can definitely look at. Um, and then again, like between, obviously, uh, Bill's away tomorrow. Um, so we probably won't start meeting about this until next week, but if you have areas, continue to send me those areas that you want us to look at because everything you guys point out is things that make us stop and think, oh, what is that? So continue to do that work because it only helps guide the conversation.
I just had the one more too, as, before we move on to the next thing, it was the um, um, the athletic training kind of, I don't remember what it was called.
Maxway.
Maxway. Just to see, like, is that being utilized, multiple sports, I know Josh spoke to it a bit here, that's one coach, I, you know, our other teams using it. And I mean, I've, I've put together things myself and I am definitely not trying to say, let's replace people by artificial intelligence cause that, that's a scary world too. But like, if it, if, you know, there are things that we could do for high quality and less money, depending on what, what, what are, are we, is the value there? I, I don't know.
So we'll look at the accreditation, we'll look at the PD coordinators, the Maxway, Bookmobile, um.
NEAS.
The NEAS accreditation. I have some good direction. We'll do that.
Okay, alright, so does that kinda close out our budget review topic?
Part of the budget.
It was really brief tonight.
I know.
Just to record, my report wasn't the reason we finished.
No, I know, um, I know, I think you said you need to head out.
I can do it.
Okay, I just wanted to ask, yeah, that's next, so if you wanted to review your principal report, cause I just, I did wanna ask you a question um related to that.
Go ahead.
So in your report, um, you had indicated that, and it was, it's relevant because of our snow day. It says, um, and this is the, I'm sorry, this is your report, says special condi- considerations for SST. I happen to read this, um, and it says, if Epping schools are canceled due to poor weather travel conditions, example, snow day, there is no SST. However, I also received the email from Tyler on parent square and he, he, it was a reminder of um SST expectations. And in that SST, it's the SST welcome letter, and I happened to read this, cause I was thinking about our kids being on the road or.
I don't mean to cut you off, but I know where you're headed with this and I can explain what happened.
So, but it, he, I just wanted to say, it, it contradicts and I'm glad you are probably already aware, but it's, cause it says in that letter that was sent out to parents, if Epping schools are canceled, example, to a snow day and SST is in session, students are expect, expected to attend SST. So that's, I'm just bringing that up as a um, I don't even have a kid at SST, but I worry about our kids on the road when there's, our ta- our town roads are not great, we say stay home. So that's where, I just wanted to bring that up to you.
I can save you some time. So the guidance that we were given three years, and I'm actually glad you said that because it made me feel really good about putting them all on the bus. So I appreciate that piece, cause I feel they're spread them on the road.
Yeah.
Three, four years ago, we got guidance that we were, or three years ago obligated, descending schools were obligated by transportation to your local SST. At that time, that included days when if SST was in session, we were here. So that language was, when we first did it, was we would respect every family's choice, but I felt the same way as you did. Um, I said, what, if we're saying our roads aren't safe to come to school, we shouldn't send them, have to get on the bus, but we were following the guidance of we have to provide transportation. When did we have a snow day, Tuesday?
Yeah, Tuesday.
Tuesday morning, I came here, cause I live the closest to do morning attendance on SST, cause we always administrative do it, and the bus didn't come. So I called the bus company and they said, we were told that we are no longer um to send buses if the local school is canceled.
Yeah.
That message never got to us. I called the principal at SST and I said, she's great, we have a great relationship. I said, Pam, I think there's a breakdown here.
Right.
Might be on our end. She said, I said, are we the only school that's been doing this? And she said, yes. And she said, and thank you, because you were following the law, but the law did not, did not, was not dictated by common sense. So now it's the way it's in here, if we don't have school, we do not want kids coming and we will not send an SST bus. But that was poorly communicated to me, so you, you got a message based on what has been the practice and nobody communicated with us that that practice had changed, so uh some of us showed up. But fortunately, only one Epping student listened to Tyler's message, they all listened to Pam Carr's message and we only had one kid show up on Tuesday, which was great.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So would, would you say, so again, I happened to read both things randomly, like I read that on Tuesday.
Message will carry moving forward.
So, so there will be information going out to, so, or, or maybe they already know that SST, that if school is canceled because of snow. I mean, I mean, let's be honest.
If we have a delay and, and it actually happened the very next morning, so.
Yes, they said, delay, I know there's, and there's different expect, yeah.
Exter didn't, right.
So we, we, we were able to actually fix the problem the very next day, cause we had delay, exter didn't, so we sent the message saying contrary to what had previously been, this change is now prevailed.
I mean, we're not gonna, if a, if a kid wanted to get in, not that we want them to, but if they wanna get in their car and drive to SST, they have that right. But, but we're not here though, right?
Well, so.
So my child goes to SST, for some reason.
SST doesn't want them to arbitrarily decide to drive on their own.
Okay.
And they've appreciated the fact that we still.
Right, cause they don't have parking, okay, so.
And it's dangerous.
Okay, so, so.
And our attendance is bad.
No, no, if, if Epping is closed, by the way, I loved Bill Furbush's email out, very funny.
It was awesome.
And very funny and I appreciated the witty, yes, the wit. But if it's closed, then we, then SS, then we are not asking our kids to go to SST.
Correct.
Great, okay, thank you.
That is a change as of Tuesday.
Okay.
Which is what I found out.
Yeah, so thank you, that's, that, so your, your, your report is accurate, wherein it says if um.
Will that be updated in the. No, that needs, that report, the inclement weather information that you have in front of you also needs to be updated.
So your principal's report is accurate, but it's the SST welcome letter that had a bunch of frequently asked questions.
And that welcome letter was sent in.
Gotcha.
September or August.
Yeah, and then it was resent on Monday night.
That said, just send them the reminder.
Send them the reminder, okay, great, thank you very much, I appreciate the clarification.
No, and, and to those of you who are still tuned in home, I am sorry that that miscommunication happened, I'm glad it only affected one person, I talked to that family personally.
Yeah.
But that's, that should be perfect.
Great, thank you.
That was an easy one.
Yeah, I just, I just, yeah, um, did you wanna share anything else? I mean, we obviously.
Just, just all the inclement weather information's there, people can read it at home, um, we've all worked really hard tonight. The, the biggest things, I'd never wanna glance over the student voice piece, um, that's, that's always been the most important there. And so I did some individual shout-outs there, um, but specifically for the second year in a row, we were able to expand on National Art Society um, providing Thanksgiving meals for families in need. Um, I think we uh like have thirty-three percent more families than we served last year. Um, there are a few families that were affected in, in terms of transportation, so um we did a few deliveries this year, which uh was a new thing and, and, and pretty awesome. Uh, but people were remarkable, specifically, you know, N sixty-eight, our, our partnership with them. But Karen Neckton as the National Art Society, the National Art Society students, um, Ms. Pacillion, um chef moss for the storage, uh, the facilities guys. Mr. Sousa joined me uh for the morning so that we could, uh, the only, the only uh people the clients would see were us. Everything that happened, the kids stayed in the gym and got everything ready, we did a, we, numbering, it was really cool, um, so that was really well done. I, I'm trying to do some individual accolades and I just wanna point out that the football uh season awards um wouldn't have come out until probably sometime halfway through this meeting. So there, they'll be included in the next one, um, but there were some pretty significant individual student awards. And I wanna talk, you know, it's important that um the, the culture around our sports teams has improved tremendously. That was something when I entered, was in the surveys, that the, the experiences for athletes and male athletes in the Epping district was far different than it was for every other student. And so that has sort of turned around and the culture's, it's, it's a proud moment. So Blake Snyder, Division Four Player of the Year, All-State First Team, All-Tournament, um, NS, NHSCA, which is the Cozes Association, Boys State Team. That means that Blake was identified as one of the top eleven soccer players in the entire state of New Hampshire, not in Division Four, in all divisions. That's, that's a big deal, we haven't had one of those, and he's now the all-time goal scoring leader with ninety-nine career goals.
Jackson. Find him one more.
I only have so much input.
We held off on buying new sock nets for as long as we could.
That's amazing, oh wow.
And we would've tied in the championship game.
Right.
Tiffany's gonna be all over me in the morning. Uh, Jackson Pellon, All-State First Team, All-Tournament Team, Granite State All-Conference Boys Soccer South, and a new school record holder for career assists. Um, Aiden Murphy, All-State First Team, All-Tournament Team, Granite State All-Conference Team, Boys Soccer South, and Granite State Boys Soccer South Player of the Year. Addison Waters, Girls Soccer, All-State Honorable Mention, Maddie Sullivan, Granite State, All-Conference Girls Soccer South. And Rachel Mazzone, All-State Honorable Mention uh for volleyball, um, and selected of, to play in the senior statewide um volleyball tournament in Salem, uh Salem High School. So that was a pretty neat experience, those are great individual accomplishments. Um, the volleyball team made it to the playoffs for the twentieth straight year. Um, the boys soccer team, um, for the third straight year, um, to the finals. And our girls soccer team, through the work of our coaches, uh, have their, I was, I think it was one of the first times in history, a team with a winning record did not make the, the state tournament. Uh, but that's a tremendous turnaround from where they've been. Our football team obviously had a great year too and we'll talk more about those accolades. I was also going to ask that we put the um athletic uh fall season to the nineteenth, if that agenda's not already. It's time for Mr. Golds to come into that and do the end of seasons uh each year, and that's who we're getting March to do. And then again, uh, just to remind folks, you know, it's been tough for a lot of people. If you find as the holiday season's underway, the spirit of giving, please contact school nurses, uh, school counseling and we will always sort of find ways to either patch people in. with resources or provide some of what we have available and make sure nobody goes without whenever we can.
That's awesome. Yeah, thank you. Thanks for hanging in there for.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
So due to the EES principals uh did have a staff holiday celebration this evening, so I said I would take their lead and I'm going to give it as much as I possibly can, but I will not do it the justice that they normally do, but I'm gonna try. Um but it is in your drive, so you can follow along. Uh holiday concerts are a important highlight to ha- point out. Uh grades one, two, and three will be December eighth and grades four and five, band of course, December ninth. These do happen at the Allen Gym at the Middle High School at six PM and the doors open at five thirty, so it's always important to come out and see everyone, celebrate their holiday cheer and sing along, so um mark your calendars to make sure you attend that event. Some curriculum things that have happened on, yesterday was December third. Um these SARS reports went live in Power School at three PM. So if you haven't already, take a moment to log into your Power School to review your child's SARS reports, which is your student achievement report. Um and then if you have any questions or anything, make sure you take a moment, you know, to reach out to the administration, um Sarah Cantrell or anyone else to help understand anything that you might see in there. Um there was some, lots of responsive classrooms that's been going on, they have morning meetings that they're meeting together to talk about responsive classrooms, it really seems to be doing really good, uh putting time together for professional development and personal training, um so that's been kind of really taking off here at the school. Look at the pictures of the kindness around EES, they have this be be in the kind thing where students have been the eye in the kind. Um we've had some staff actually take some, actually Mazzoni that just left took a picture of himself in the eye of the kind and sent a picture out too, so it's, there's some really cute pictures about the kids in there. Um and then something else that's been happening this year um at the elementary school is more student voices being heard, so kids are now doing the morning announcements. Um at eight fifty, the kiddos come in and they're doing announcements and um some of the leaders that have been coming in, Riley and Colton and Andrew and Waylon, uh the student council. They come in every day and they sh- you know, share some news of the day, from birthdays to lunches to special happenings and a joke of the day, their pledge allegiance. Um and always end it with kind, safe, helpful, respectful. So um we love the student voice and encourage them to come out and speak. And it's good for them to have that experience and for their other students to hear that. Um quick shout outs. Jenica Minst- Minst- oop, sorry, I'm gonna. Uh she's a kindergarten teacher, she's new this year, um and she's just really doing a great job, she's really taken off hitting the the grounds running, um she started some outdoor learning uh with um Aislinn Murdoch. They're both new hires this year and they've been doing some classroom buddies and going outside. So you can see some pictures of some stuff that they're doing with their buddy program um in there as well. And then Gwen um does the video club, these are are great, I they come out every Sunday, I think, in the newsletters and you can go on and watch and I think it's so great to see the kids and really just how they come together in some of these videos, that I I watch them and I crack up all the time watching it, they're amazing to watch, so if you ever have a chance, go through look at them, um they're really fun, so cheers to them.
If you haven't watched them, highly encourage it.
What a great way for our kids to have their voice seen and heard and like have that opportunity, like I know public speaking was one of the, my class, I did even worse than in college, I hated public speaking and now here I am speaking outside. But to be in front of the cameras, to get that knowledge at that young of an age, what a great opportunity for them, so you know, really shout out, congratulations to them for doing that and way to go kids, they're great videos. Um and the last part in here is there's a children's Christmas party on Saturday, December thirteenth from one to three o'clock. Santa's gonna be there around one thirty, two thirty, he's gonna make a special stop here in Epping um to come to the American Legion to visit the kids, so all you families out there, come see Santa. Um he's excited to make a stop in Epping to see us, so uh feel free to stop in.
Well, it's nice that we had it, we had it early enough to be able to take a look at it, so it's nice, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um I'm going to make a recommendation that we move policy, it is ten of ten.
God, I was just hoping.
If Robin were here, I'm just, you know, I'm just putting on my Robin hat and we have been here for three hours and forty-five minutes, we have a student who needs to go to school tomorrow.
Yes.
So let's finish our agenda and.
For sure, there's nothing.
I don't think these are, any of these are timely, that they can wait, so sorry if anybody. We're all agreement, okay, great, personnel, sorry, go ahead.
No personnel, there is no financial business, so move on through this.
And I know there were some.
I was just about to say, I think we should ta- again, unfortunately table the non-public, cause then they are still incorrect. But the public meeting minutes from the twentieth looked correct.
Okay, no, I did have a question though, the thirteenth looks right, cause that's the one that we all were together, right?
No, no, so the the night of the sixth, we had a non-public before the meeting and then after the meeting. So there should be a two, two entries and two exits for a non-public on the sixth, on the thirteenth, we had, we had one long non-public meeting.
At the SAU.
Right, and that was, there were, so we had, we had a public session just long enough to open up the non-public and then went into that and we were in for two and a half hours, I believe.
So we opened public and then closed.
Cause you have to technically, always have to have a public meeting and then you go into non-public and then leave. Uh but it was, it was not a regularly scheduled meeting night, so that's all we had on the thirteenth was just non-public. So.
Okay, okay, got it, super, so we are um if hopefully you had a chance to review the public meeting minutes from November twentieth, twenty twenty-five, do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the public meeting minutes of November twentieth as presented.
Second.
Moved by Ben, seconded by Jen, all in favor? All opposed, that passes four zero. Okay, I'm gonna go really fast. Manifest, let's see, the first two, three, four, five, okay, I'm gonna do five and then we can approve all five. Payroll deposited on November twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of three hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty-seven cents. Payroll deposited on November twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of a hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy-nine cents. Payroll deposited on November twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of eight thousand, five dollars and seventy cents. And payroll deposited on November twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of three hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars and thirty-seven cents. Lastly, payroll deposited on November twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of one hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty-one cents.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ben, seconded by Jen, all in favor? All opposed, that passes four zero. Accounts payable deposited on November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of one hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eighty cents.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ben, seconded by Jen, all in favor? All opposed, that passes four zero. Accounts payable deposited on November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ben, seconded by Jen, all in favor? I, all opposed, that passes four zero. Board comments, Jen?
I just wanted to say thank you to the people who showed up tonight to speak, um the public and some of them who were uh employees here, and I know that that can be difficult sometimes, um you don't know how, maybe that's gonna be received by all the people who are hearing, but I think that the more we can hear how a decision, the impact that a decision can potentially have, the more we can understand the impact, the better decisions we can make, so that's not to undermine any of the people or processes that were in place, but we all have a vested interest in the the success of running this place, this district, and um I think the more we can understand, again, the more we can understand how all the the, how how all the impacts um play out. And so I just, you know, I appreciate that and admire that people had the courage, cause that can be hard, and would just invite m- more people to come and be a part of the process and 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 be a part of of what moves us forward as well, because we are better when we all can can help and and be part of that drive, so I appreciate that. That's really it for me.
Thanks, Jen. Ben?
Uh I don't think I have anything, I think Jen summed up tonight pretty well. I echoed everything Jen said as well, and love to see more people come up.
I said, Sam, I think it's a a great process that we go through and I think that everyone on this team does a great job and the admin team putting things together and but no one knows every in and out, so it's good to have eyes and then perspectives from everybody to make our best decision moving forward, so. Thank you for everyone, for the input and making sure we have a good budget.
I I think, thank you, I think the only thing I wanted to add and and again, my sort of inexperience as a board chair, um a question came to me. Could people who do not live in town speak publicly? I don't know, and um that is a board decision, and maybe that's, we did allow it to not, I felt it was talking about the budget, um so I did know that we were gonna be having some educators here that did not live in town, but I truly, if it's relevant to what we are doing here, I think it's very appropriate to have public come who do not live here, but who have some sort of vested interest in us as a school district, so if they are an educator or perhaps they're a grandparent and they live in the next town over, but they're speaking about something specific to our school district.
Yeah, I wonder if it belongs in public comment versus being just in the budget discussion. Cause they could be speaking to the budget on behalf of the department versus a public comment.
In either case, it's still okay, cause I I think while while it is typical that that public comment is nor- normally for town residents, it is, it is typically uh an option that is at the chair's discretion to let someone speak who is not a town resident, but I think when we have people who are coming in representing themselves as employees, you know, I I I think in a way that kind of supersedes the residency requirement, cause they're here speaking about their professional, uh their professional opinion about the district that they work in, so how how would we get that if they didn't come and speak?
Right, correct, so it sounds like we're 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 supportive. I I sort of made the decision because it came at the beginning of the week, that yes, to come speak during public comments. Um but it sounds like we're in agreement that if other situations come up and it is relevant, then we would welcome that public, those public comments, so. So yeah, um so um and I and I know, and sometimes we have, you know, we have, we have some long and um difficult discussions and decisions to make and I just want to acknowledge that um I I do think that we we all handle it, we we don't all agree and we, but we do have to come to some decisions and um I value the time that we spend and, you know, it's ten o'clock and, you know, we're, we've been here since six and um it's it's important work that we are doing, especially especially around the budget, well, not just especially also during during the budget, it's very important, so.
We kind of plan for that too at the beginning of this, knowing that some of these meetings might go longer because budget discussions.
Yeah, yeah. Um so do I have a motion to adjourn?
When's our next meeting?
Oh, thank you. Our next meeting is December eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, here in the Library Media Center at Epping Elementary School. Now do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you so much, Parker.
Thank you, Parker.